...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone that's here this evening, those that are watching. I'll go over our agenda. We have a consent agenda which this evening consists solely of the minutes of the last meeting. We have a public hearing this evening on a planned residential overlay district for Colonial Highlands and then we have a preliminary plat for Colonial Highlands. And the last agenda item is an alternative sign plan for Appleby's. So with that, I'll go to the first agenda item, the minutes of the last meeting. Who to approve?
Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same thing. Sign. Before I open the public hearing, I'll go over the procedure for a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. I will call on our city attorney for a list of exhibits. I will call on a staff representative to make a presentation. Then I will call on the applicant to make a presentation. At that time, I will open it to the audience. Those that want to speak in favor will be given that opportunity. Those that want to oppose it will also be given an opportunity. If you come from the audience and want to speak, you will have to be sworn in however. So with that, I will open the public hearing. Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, the city has eight exhibits. Number one is a staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the newspaper. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Before I call on Mr. Allen, I should say that we will hear Agenda Items Two and Three together. We will vote on them individually however.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Before you this evening is a PRL concept plan as well as separately a preliminary plat for the Colonial Highlands residential development. The property, as you see there on the map, consists of about 163 acres. Amstey Parkway, not quite bisects but cuts through the property to the east and northeast. Wyatt Road is to the south and the Eagles Ridge residential subdivision is to the west and the Colonial Nursery business is to the south and to the north is Lake Village as well as to the northeast Willow Tree subdivision. As I'm sure you recall, back in April of 2007, this project was, excuse me, March and April of 2007, this project was before you and then also the city council for similar approval. They did go through annexation and rezoning in addition to the planned residential overlay concept plan and the preliminary plat. Essentially what the applicant is requesting today, because the PRL concept plan was only valid for one year from the date of its approval in April of 2007, they are requesting essentially a reapproval of the PRL concept plan as well as the preliminary plat related to it. Staff then provided page three of 12 on your PRL concept plan, staff report nine different considerations that the applicant has provided a response to separately in relation to the Unified Development Codes requirements for planned residential overlay project. They've provided that in the form of a statement of compliance as well as separately adjacency compatibility report in relation to primarily Eagles Ridge and Willow Tree. Staff does recommend approval, once again, of the PRL concept plan with 15 conditions. The preliminary plat, which I'll talk about more specifically secondly here, is also recommended for approval with nine conditions in the staff report and a 10th additional condition, which was handed out to you before the meeting. That 10th condition is in relation to primarily stormwater requirements that would be required as a part of the first phase. The project overall has a proposed density of 2.24 units per acre, which is consistent with the comp plan. The project is proposed to occur in nine phases. I believe their statement identified just four phases, but there are nine phases identified on the PRL concept plan itself with approximately 365 single-family homes on lots that will exceed 9,000 square feet. Specific details of the sizes of the homes have not been provided, but again, those are required prior to or simultaneously with the final plat and/or the PRL final plan. So that's typically when those are presented. Excuse me. Again, the applicant is also, as part of the PRL, provided to require a minimum of 8% or just over 13 acres of their site for open space. And so far, as conceptionally identified here, they've provided 8.3 acres, just over 13 and two, right around 13 and two-thirds acres. Again, with the phasing plan, that's one of the changes that has occurred here from their original approval back in 2007. The yellow highlighted area is the proposed Phase One off of Amstey Parkway. Previously in 2007, Phase, excuse me, wow, Phase One was essentially in this area off of Wyatt Road versus off of Amstey Parkway, which was not, as you recall, was not completed at the time of their original approvals. Again, that's one of the major changes here in terms of their phasing. So you're seeing a different Phase One with this request. Landscaping, they did submit a conceptual landscape plan. This doesn't show it too clearly, but they're divided into two sheets, north and south, for their landscape plan. However, this does highlight in yellow the proposed open space areas. Again, that's at 13.65 acres. Similarly, a tree preservation plan is, will be required and as they've offered, that will be submitted at the time of the PRL final plan. Again, they meet the requirements for the, minimum requirements for the residential open space in terms of area. What's being proposed includes three detention basins, one neighborhood pool, that's the area right essentially in the middle off of what's proposed to be Major Road. This is the proposed Major Road, neighborhood pool in that area. As well as other passive areas and that adds up to that 13.65, seven acres or 8.3% of the property. Previously, back in 2007, the developer had proposed playground equipment that would be added to the open space. They did not provide that specificity this time around. If that is still their intent, they need to provide that, those details with the PRL final plan. So that's still an option at the PRL final plan stage. Street improvements, I'm sure the applicant will speak to this in more detail, but again, because Phase One is shifting to Amstey Parkway and the proposed Major Road, of which Major Road is not constructed whatsoever in this area. However, again, with their previous first phase, Wyatt Road was already constructed. So they're just looking at some street improvements, not actual full-blown street construction. And here, I'll show you. It's a little bit difficult to see, if not impossible to see, but I'll try to point it out for you here. This is proposed Major Road, kind of followed by two different colors highlighting here. This is Cook Road. Major Road extends to the east towards Green Valley this way. This is a portion that again is planned, but not part of any development approvals or construction designs at this point. This is the portion here. It's light green on the map. It looks more like light yellow on the screen, but this is the portion that goes through Colonial Highlands. And this portion here is in between the Timothy Lutheran Church property to the south and the Eagles Ridge development to the north and then connects up with Seven Highway. So the applicant has some concerns regarding the standard UDC requirements for constructing Major Road along that first phase? As you can see here, this is the first phase generally in this area and Major Road. They're proposing to construct only this portion, whereas the UDC requires that everything abutting there, each of these phases needs to be constructed at that time of the phase. That is extending half of the road from Amstey Parkway all the way essentially to this point. So with that, again, the developer's requesting that that requirement to construct or escrow for one half of that Major Road, that whole stretch be waived. Again, that's something that's primarily going to be an issue for the city council to consider, but obviously it's something for your consideration tonight as well. That is identified as a specific condition in both the PRL concept plan as well as the preliminary plat. Is maybe a little bit confusing in the applicant's submittal in terms of their narrative regarding how this project connects or does not connect to Willow Tree. You can see there to the north and east, there's no direct connection to Willow Tree, but there is that connection obviously via Amstey Parkway, but that exists now to be the case. So again, just the way it was worded was maybe a little bit confusing. There is no direct connection from this proposed development into Willow Tree beyond what's already constructed on Amstey Parkway. Regarding sidewalk or pedestrian bike paths, developer is required to install five-foot sidewalks along that Major Road and there are going to be at least on one side of all local streets sidewalks. But it is noted here in bold on page nine of 12 that the same terminology and information was provided from the 2007 approval. Again, staff is concerned that size and layout of the tracks, as you see there, may not be conducive to a system of trails in development. There are some connections that are being proposed, however, and that is primarily, excuse me, primarily on the east side here, running between these two tracks, then down along the east side here. The remainder would have just single points of entry essentially to them, either through the public sidewalk system or through some other, other means. Again, as noted in the adjacency compatibility report submitted by the applicant, talking about architectural character of the proposed housing, they are looking to maintain a compatible architectural style within the subdivision as those of Willow Tree and Eagles Ridge, both of which include variable styles, including ranch, story and a half, and two-story homes. So the developer intends to construct the same, but again, we do not have any specifics, in terms of staff does not have any specifics to provide you tonight. Moving on and closing out some of the comments here, subdivision classification, just wanted to highlight some of the comments that were made there in the staff report. Developer's proposing two different minimum living floor areas. One is 1,600 square feet. That's the F classification and that's on the east side of Amstey Parkway, adjacent to, again, Willow Tree and the undeveloped property to the east. And then a G classification of 1,400 square feet, minimum on essentially everything to the west of Amstey Parkway, again, abutting Eagles Ridge and the Timothy Lutheran undeveloped property to the south and west. As you can see, along the west there, there are several different areas that the proposed Colonial Highlands is abutting and that we tried to identify that as best we could in the table on page 11 where it talks about abutting development classification. Eagles Ridge to the north and west there has a 2,000-square-foot minimum for their single family, which is a D classification. That's essentially this third of the western boundary of Colonial Highlands. And then south, kind of the middle third, is along MF14, fourplexes, and that has the 850-square-foot minimum floor area and that is a classification J. And so essentially what the, and then of course, there's nothing developed in this area, the southern third. So essentially what the applicant is proposing is more or less splitting the difference between these two classifications and coming in with a G classification for the entire area. As noted here, however, again, given these varying factors with the three different abutting development types, may not be appropriate to provide just that single classification for that entire western area west of Amstey Parkway. So something just for your consideration. Did not identify that as a specific condition, but just wanted to bring that to your attention in terms of those housing classifications. With that, again, sort of kind of belabor the issue, but concluding here then with the conditions, there are 15 conditions as proposed by staff. There really is only one additional condition from the 2007 approvals and that's condition number two, just to clarify, was just clarification type standardized condition we've been placing in these requests, development review requests. The PRL final plan should be approved prior to any building permits being released for any phase of the development. So just kind of a standard condition there. And again, references to Wyatt Road now are referencing, with the first phase, are now referencing Major Road. So with that, those are, that concludes the comments that I have for the concept plan, PRL concept plan. With the preliminary plat, I don't really have much more to add other than to reference that condition number 10 that's being proposed after discussion with our city engineer. So if any questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to respond to those. But does identify, again, because the first phase, as we're identifying, I'll move back to that As you can see with the first phase, there really is no, the open space, there aren't the large-scale detention areas as open space like you see in some of the other phases. Like in this area, again, this is a detention basin being proposed. So this phase is being accounted for with that detention basin, not so much in this area. And therefore, again, the majority of the detention, even in a temporary basin state, may be off-site. So again, from our city engineer, we're proposing condition number 10, which states that the developer shall provide off-site utility easements as necessary to serve the utility needs of Phase One of this development with their final plat submittal. So once we move to that final plat stage for, again, Phase One, just requesting that any offset utility easements that may be required, again, depending on necessity, what's necessitated out there with this Phase One needs to be provided with that final plan. I think there was one more thing, if I can just go back real quickly, Mr. Chair, back to the PRL concept plan. Regarding, again, each of those phases, I don't think there's any kind of tabulation in terms of number of housing units for each phase, but staff did go through that today and hopefully the numbers agree with what the applicant has on their, in their math, but the total does equal that 365 and that first phase is showing 55 housing units. And the only other phase that has anything more is Phase Six with 56 units, but it all averages in that kind of, around that 30s, 30s to 40s, up to 50 units. So they're all fairly standard in size. There's no one phase that's three times larger than another or something to that fact necessarily. So with that, staff, myself, Jim Holly, who is the author of the staff report and has worked most closely with the applicant, and Cesar Yana, source city engineer here, will open for any questions you may have.
Are there questions for Mr. Allen?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Allen. First, the square footage, or the square footage minimums. I know that we always try to have one, no more than one step. So I'm a little concerned that we're dropping, like on Eagles Ridge, we've got 2,000-square-foot minimum homes, I'm sure that most of them are larger than that, are going to be abutting 1,400-square-foot homes. And then on the other side of Amstey, going from Willow Tree, you've got 1,850 and then 16 and then 1,400. I have some concerns with those, that large deviation.
Sure. On the east side of Amstey Parkway, again, that is just the one step from the E classification to the F. So everything east of Amstey Parkway certainly fits within that. And again, to the west, that's why staff did note that it was quite a wide net that they cast in terms of making everything that G classification, whereas, again, there are, at least with the developed area with Eagles Ridge or proposed area, there are two classifications covering two-thirds of that western boundary. Again, staff understands that they're essentially looking at kind of the middle ground between those two with that entire area, but yes, that's why we did note perhaps that's maybe not the best approach because of the different, the wide variation in Eagles Ridge.
I've never heard of this averaging out property in order to reach a number.
Well, and again, it's how, sure, and how their phasing comes into play as well. You can see some of those darker lines on there does not match up obviously with the different house classifications on Eagles Ridge either. So again, jumping mid-block classifications and their project wouldn't necessarily make the most sense either. So I guess I'll defer to the applicant to explain perhaps why they're looking at averaging the two and how they can quantify and justify that.
Yeah, because if I had a home that was over 2,000 square feet and somebody put a 1,400-square-foot home right up against me, I would not be a happy camper.
Sure, and we're looking at primarily these, these houses here and the rest, as you can see from here on, are actually, on Colonial Highlands are going to be much larger than obviously the fourplexes immediately next to them. But yeah, so essentially the area I think that you're referring to is really going to be up in this area for the most part.
Yes.
Okay.
Then my other question is about the open space. Unfortunately, in the subdivision I reside, nobody can get to the open space. So as I looked at this, I'm wondering, and I understand you said there was going to be some kind of a trail on the far east side between those two open spaces?
Yeah, the yellow island doesn't show up very well. This is actually technically a separate tract here, running between this open space and this.
And what about the open space down in the far southwest corner? How does anybody get there? And what do you do with it? I mean, that's great.
Oh, that's a very good question. Now, again, obviously Wyatt Road is along here, so there's public access that way.
So you'd have to go out and go down Wyatt Road and are we going to have parking areas or something for people to access that area?
And these are all very good questions. I will certainly defer to the applicant because those are questions we've asked them as well in terms of connectivity between, between any of these. And again, as you can see, the room and the space for that is limited by the design here, but again, it's hard to see here. Perhaps I'm missing, there's perhaps a connection here that I'm missing, but you know, similar to these have connections. Obviously, Amstey Parkway could connect in here. But again, I'll defer to them in terms of actual public access from interior rather than on public right-of-way, correct?
Right. And even though that on Amstey, I mean, that wouldn't be, I mean, if I wanted to go to the common area and play with my kids or something, I'd have to drag them down Amstey Parkway.
Right. And again, our reference to the kind of mini park classification of these open spaces is primarily based on the previous approval. Again, I'll defer to the applicant in terms of what their, their long-term plans are for any kind of, I guess, active open space. Again, much of this is going to be passive in nature, but if there's active open space beyond, again, the pool and things of that sort, I guess I'll defer to them.
I always thought that the reason we had open space was so that there would be some common properties, not just a piece of property, the size of one lot set off where no one has access to it.
Correct. Correct. And that was, that's why we, we're identifying here, just so you can see geographically where the open space lies. But again, pointing back to the 2007 approval, this is not unlike that area, that approval at all. I mean, it's really, it is mirroring if not exactly the same, very much the same.
Well, other than the fact that in the old one, as I, as I read through that earlier today, they did not have the proper square footage on the ones from a couple of years ago for Eagles Ridge. They had that listed at 15 or 1,600 square feet, which is, it's not.
Right, right, exactly. And that's a good point because, you know, we were looking back at our Eagles Ridge files today and I think it was late 2005 was when there was an amendment done actually and all the multifamily MF14 is, those are fourplexes. I think you're referencing some of the original plans were duplexes in some of that area, but it's all just fourplexes. So it is the 850 square feet.
Yeah. So the, the numbers have changed a little bit there.
Yes, that's true. Right.
Can you tell me what phase the property immediately south, I'm sorry, immediate, on the east side of Amstey? What phase is that?
This phase, nine? Okay, so that's the final phase.
So that's going to be the last phase. So we're going to build all these small homes before we get to the medium-sized homes.
As the phasing plan states, yeah, I would, again, accurate statement based on the information we have, again, that perhaps applicant can clarify that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Scott, just a quick question. Track D, does that, that shows that it goes all the way up to, was it Rosemary Drive? It has an easement on it?
Yes, you're right. Yeah, again, most of those, it's hard to see with the thin nature of those accesses here with the scale, but yeah, majority of those do have some interior access points or cross-access points where you access one of the open spaces and then you kind of run around the boundary more or less to connect to the others. But yeah, you can see even up here, there is an access point at this point.
On, on, track D, yeah.
Right here?
Yes.
And that's, yeah, I apologize, just the scale, it's hard to see what that is. Yes, absolutely. And again, this is obviously access from the interior street here, access between these, these three, and then there's a connection point here as well.
I have a question. The detention basin, I've seen some beautiful detention basins as out showing houses. And this is going to be backing up next to Willow Tree.
Yes.
Do we have any guidelines on this detention basin? Who's going to take care of it? What it's supposed to look like? Because sometimes they get in there and then they sit and they don't, aren't becoming.
Correct. And that is something we've identified as being necessarily, excuse me, being necessary for the homeowners association to maintain that. And I think the applicant has actually identified that initially. Are you talking more about aesthetically how it's going to be maintained beyond just the standard HOA or just the location itself presents itself as maybe less aesthetically pleasing?
Both.
Okay. Again, defer to the applicant just in terms of any details for their design for that. That has not been provided to this point, how that's going to be accessed beyond what's shown there for any kind of use other than just for detention. Again, it is counted as open space, but there's going to be active open space around that. It has not been identified specifically. Now, to the north, again, this is concerning, yes, we did bring to the applicant's attention as well, considering similar developments where there's a detention basin immediately adjacent to an established subdivision. The properties to the north, there are two lots that... The properties to the north, there are two lots that are abutting it to the north, and those are actually presently owned by the developer himself. So there is some common ownership there. There are not houses built where this is going to drain to the north. So there's some, there's more, in terms of context of this detention basin, there's a better scenario to the north than perhaps you may have seen with some other developments.
Could I ask for clarification? You said the two lots are owned by which developer?
Right here.
The new, the developer of this property?
Yes, of this, of this property, Mr. Tharp.
Oh, he owns the two lots north of that?
Correct, as, as it's been explained to me.
All right, thank you.
Are there other questions for Mr. Allen?
I noticed in the little inset for the pool, I see seven parking spaces. And I'm wondering if that is what you came up with or am I just something, and it does seem like that would be sufficient?
That's still obviously conceptual in nature. The details will have to be identified with the PRO final plan. This is a drawing that was provided by the applicant. So, yeah, we did not actually look at square footage and parking requirements. I apologize, no, we did not specify seven versus five, or 10.
Other question? Yes?
Can you kind of show or outline where the different phases will be directed as far as detention areas? And the one that I'm in particularly, I think you just commented on is Track D. It looks like drainage will go into Track D, and then there'll be a high-grade extension more into Willow Tree into that next one. And I'm referring to sheet two of three of the PRO concept plan?
Yes, this shows more specifically the proposed drainage to the north. And as it stands, again, I apologize, the applicant I think can better describe what's occurring on Willow Tree, but there is, if not already constructed, at least the easements even in place for this, this structure. So there, again, just in terms of future thinking with this detention basin, there are allowances already being made for that to the north.
But there's part on the west side that will drain over to that detention area?
Yes.
And then where does it split on the east side? Or will that handle all the east side?
That is a question above my level of understanding. I apologize, and perhaps our city, excuse me, city engineer could maybe respond to where that is. Again, it's still conceptual in nature, but.
Yes, I believe at this time, we don't have all the updated, whatever, report.
We can't hear you guys.
Cool. I'm sorry. At one time, I thought that property to the northeast, that I think is Track F or E, they were not going to use that as a detention, mostly they were going to use it as a common area. But, you know, I don't have the final report. They, initially, I had a report, a preliminary report they need to update to this plan. So I don't have any solid answers.
I have one more question.
All right.
On the architectural character? Because I know we've made a lot of changes since 2007. One of the thoughts I have is, it says, and your last line, it says, "The developer has not provided this assurance in this development according to the compatibility and style." And he's going to, they're going to be abutting both Willow Tree and Eagle's Ridge.
Yes.
And I guess I just have a concern that through this, they're supposed to have certain types of homes, neutral colors, all this, but yet, there's no assurances.
Beyond what they've submitted as part of their application through that JNC compatibility report. So again, that's a minimum that's required for the PRO concept plan application. Again, the next level of detail is required when they get to that PRO final plan stage. Again, we did identify these potential concerns to the applicant and explain that at times, like, like we're hearing now, the planning commission has questions regarding these details at this stage, just to get a better handle of what's being proposed for the overall development. So, again, perhaps the, I don't want to speak out of turn, perhaps applicant does have some more information beyond what was included in your staff report attachments.
May I ask, does this request need to be updated from the 2007 request?
There were a few, I think, inconsistencies perhaps in their, in their submittal with the narrative. Again, I think there was some reference to four phases when there are really nine phases. Again, those might have just been some typos. I don't want to speak again for them beyond what was just submitted, so perhaps they can explain some of the information they provided to you, what the, I guess, the timeliness of it from 2007 versus now, if there's anything that's really been modified from their narrative in terms of the details you're asking about.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Right, thank you.
The applicant, please make your presentation.
I do, Greg Grounds, 1401 Northwest Wildwood Drive, Blue Springs, Missouri. Haven't been here in a while. It's a privilege to be back again for a number of reasons, not the least of which is I know that you are all aware that the housing market, the new housing market, has been abysmal. So it's a pleasure to come forth with a proposal with someone who actually not only wants to plat lots, but to build houses on them. I don't want to be redundant on some of the things that are in the report, but I do want to touch on a couple of things and hopefully address some of the questions that have been raised. First, let me point out that but for the passage of time and the way the economy changed in terms of mortgages, this project would already been going forward as it was approved back in '07, '08. It did not, so we don't offer excuses for that. We realize we need to meet the rules as they exist right now. But I do point out that it has been through this process before, and a number of things happened that I think everyone's memories are a little bit weak on, my own perhaps, and I'll try not to misspeak. But, for example, one of the things is asked about pedestrian ways and pedestrian communication within the project. Back in 2007, the developer agreed that he would put sidewalks on both sides of the street, five feet wide, at a considerable expense. Instead of trying to bust through between lots, he would allow communication on both sides of the street. At that time, that was greeted as a real step forward, and it was included again in this plan. And that's why you don't see separate pedestrian ways, but you see sidewalks on both sides, which are a rare thing in the city of Blue Springs. And also the five-foot sidewalks, not the anemic ones. We were, and that guy who walked through our community some years ago and complained about the four-foot sidewalks and said you couldn't pass side by side, and, you know, concrete sidewalks are at some expense. That's just one of the things, that I'm not complaining about it, but just want to point out that this project had been changed and tailored in a number of ways to meet some of the concerns you have tonight. For example, the discussion regarding Willow Tree. Could I have a picture of just? The Willow Tree lots have been addressed before, and those are the ones that abut right up here. And previously, the developer had agreed, and those are actually 16,000 square foot lots. They're not 9,000, as is in the rest of the area. Any stepping down happens within the proposed subdivision itself. That was a matter that was addressed previously. You'll also see, and I know there was some concern about the classifications, and Willow Tree's is an E, and this one is proposed as an F. So in that area, it's just one step down, so it's within those rules. In talking with my client, it was somewhat of a difficulty in trying to determine classification on the west side, something that was raised. On the one hand, we have some fourplexes. On the other hand, we have no vacant land altogether, and then there are some larger homes. They wanted to have as harmonious of a subdivision as they could, and that's why they picked that 1,400-foot range. But in talking to my clients tonight, they wanted me to point out two things. First, with regard to the lots that abut, the Eagle's Ridge ones that are 2,000 square feet, they are willing to voluntarily agree that those lots would have a 1,600 square foot, increasing those by two. And in saying that, point out that we know that the nature of the beast is such that very few people build at the minimum. For example, in Phase One that is proposed, there's been negotiations on several houses that if this is approved, will go forward and begin construction as soon as we can get final approval. And the smallest of those is 1,537, even though it's a 1,400 minimum. Because people don't plan a house and say, "I want to come in at exactly the size." They say, "Oh, I want this room a couple of feet bigger," whatever it might be. And Willow Tree itself is a great example of that. I very much doubt that there's any 1,850-square-foot house in there. Some of them are probably twice, maybe even three times that size. But we all know that the reason that builders, developers, want a minimum size is that there is occasion where somebody comes along and they want, for example, a ranch. And it's tough to put a ranch on a lot of existing lots and still have a tremendous amount of square footage, something that we, this planning commission and council has recognized before in the south in several projects where we had split footage allowances. You may recall that there was one of those down there, the name fails me, but it may have been 26 lots, and it was allowed that eight of them could be smaller in classification if they were ranches. In any event, trying to meet both goals, to have some harmony within the subdivision that's being built and also protect those on the outside, they'd pick the 1,400, but are willing to, on those lots, have a 1,600-square-foot designation. With regard to some of the drainage questions and other items that come up, let me say that on every staff suggestion, every one save one, my clients are in agreement. They have no problem whatsoever. And those include that, the rules that you all are well aware of, that the water running off cannot be at any greater weight post-development than it was pre-development. They will make sure that it happens. We are not changing the natural courses so that we're taking water from one part of a watershed and taking it over a ridge to another. We are providing all those things that the city staff and the engineering department require. We are, however, making what the team, a very serious request with regard to the requirement of the improvement of southeast major road that abuts Phase One. The rules do say, under normal circumstances, that we would have to improve that entire roadway. What would happen if that happens is that 250 feet of the road would get to the turn-in into Phase One. And the balance would be 1,200 feet of a road to nowhere at a cost of several hundred thousand dollars that might, in these economic times, make this impossible to go forward whatsoever. It'd be an expenditure that we're willing to make as soon as any lots are built or any plat is approved that that road would serve. But right now, it would be a 1,200-foot segment of improved road that would go nowhere. It creates, from our experience, and I think many in the city, a dumping ground where people go out on a vacant road and feel like they can dump their trash out. It creates a lover's lane that the police have to worry about, and it simply is a road and a requirement that has no use, just 1,200 feet of road sticking out there. Now, as soon as the next phase happens that would require any part of that other road, we will build it. But we would ask for relief from that because it truly defies logic to have that kind of expenditure, in fact, kill this project in these economic times. We have someone who's willing to go forward, even though the housing market really hasn't completely turned around yet, and wants to build lots and make it happen in the south development area. I believe there may have been a couple of other questions that you had that I haven't addressed, but if you'll bring those up, I'll be glad to address them in any way I possibly can.
Mr. Grounds, could you point to the lots that your client has committed to being 1,600?
Those are the ones that are, I don't know exactly how far down on Eagle's Ridge the 2,000 classification goes, but I believe it was indicated it was in this area. So however far they come down till they meet the fourplexes, they're willing to do that. And we can, in the final plat, we can designate those so that there'd be no doubt as to which lots those encompassed.
Mr. Chair?
Here's one that might be helpful, although it doesn't show ours, but it gives you an idea. So approximately just below the actual county land, I'm guessing it's right over in here. And since we have some open space, it would probably be these lots immediately to the north, the open space, which look to be maybe 10, 12 lots.
Mr. Grounds, I don't have a weak memory. I wasn't on the planning commission then, so.
Well, I wasn't accusing you, I was just saying in general, all of us who come back to this, it's been a little deja vu trying to remember, why did we have sidewalks on both sides? And then in talking it through, we remembered, well, that was a negotiation, so.
Okay, so the only thing I'm working on is our Blue Springs city code. And you're talking about putting 1,600-square-foot homes next door to 2,000-square-foot homes. And I know it affects the value of the 2,000-square-foot homes. Now, I appreciate going from 1,400 to 1,600, but really, according to our code, we're only supposed to take one step down, which would put it at 1,800 square feet.
Well, in the same way, if that was to happen, the developer would, I suppose, relying on the same philosophy, be able to come back and say they only want 900 square feet next to the fourplexes. It's sort of saying, we want to build a large, large homes, we want to build nice homes. We know people may build larger ones than that still, but we, we want to do it in an economically feasible fashion. And if we are to put larger homes within this subdivision, you may, I'm sure that you're aware that sometimes people say they want to build a house that's compatible for the ones that are on their street. They don't necessarily want to bump up and build a larger one. And I recall when I first came to Blue Springs, and I wanted to build a certain-sized house, and I was looking at Weatherstone West, and the builder said, "If you're going to build that big, you ought to be over in Deer Run because you will look strange among other houses." And people do give those kind of considerations. So if we were to make those 1,850, first, I think there might be some setback requirements which would require a reworking of the entire portion of the subdivision. And secondly, we might run into that problem.
Well, you're not looking at that many homes abutting up against Eagle's Ridge, from what it appears. And we may be what you call in economic times, but houses are going to sell again. And once they're built, they're there. And it does affect the value of the properties. So there's, as far as next multifamily, you could still put 1,400-square-foot homes in there because if you put in 850 again, then now you're affecting the 16 and 1,800-square-foot homes.
Well, I believe, is a 2,000 a D?
D, yes.
And I believe the rules were, I hope I remember them correctly, that we should not step down more than two.
One.
Is it one classification? We used to say two classifications when the fight happened up at Country Club.
And this is in 1997. So I'm just concerned about.
This is a request that my client is making. Certainly, you're free to put any conditions you might want on it. I, I'm just telling you that 1,600, and they probably will be larger. I don't know how many 2,000-square-foot homes have actually been built there yet, but there are some.
Other questions?
Thank you very much.
I'll open this up to the audience. Before I do, though, I would need to let you know that you are limited to five minutes each. No redundancy, no applause. If you agree with something that someone is saying, just raise your hand, we'll see that. So I will open it up now to those that would like to speak in favor of this motion. You have to come up here and be sworn in if you want to speak in favor of it. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this? All right, come forward and be sworn in, please.
We've lived there about nine years, and I have never seen a house that was 1,850-square-feet in Willow Tree. Most of them are bigger than ours, and ours is 4,000. So I don't understand how they can put 1,600 next to it. Most of those, I understand, on one floor, but not when you're talking two floors or reverse story and a half. But I don't even back up to it, and I still don't like it. And that retention area, I mean, that's a, they're going to have to improve it a lot because I walk by there every day, and it's a, it's just a hole in the ground. It's just a ditch with some old junk trees on it. I'm just, I just wish they'd build better houses, bigger houses. That's all.
Any questions for Ms. Curris? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name's David Redwine. A lot of concern about-
What was your name again?
I'm sorry?
What was your name again?
David Redwine.
Redwine, thank you.
Yes.
And your address?
That's my address. Sorry about that, but I haven't been here this long. We just got married about four years ago, so I'm new to the area. But I do live here, and I do have a problem here. Talking about these free area, free zone areas and stuff like this, up in the top there, you show a retention pond. Down here in the bottom, you show it as open area. But that's nothing but a retention pond right now. It's not a real retention pond. It's like the lady said, it's, there's a, it's a hole in the ground. Now, the experience that we've had with this development over here is that when they first started grading this property, and I may be mistaken about this, but I don't think I am, the grading was started without a proper permit. In other words, a little bit of arrogance, we might say, that, "Let's just go ahead and do something." I saw them the day they started grading. I went over and talked to the people that were doing the grading and asked them what they were doing, what their plans were. They had no plans. They were just, said, "We were just told to come over here and start scraping this area out." At the time, there were no silt fencing, there was no protection whatsoever, and so they started grading this place out. Then shortly thereafter, I would say months being shortly, they came in and expanded the area, saying that there was some kind of study or some kind of plan that it needed to be larger. At the time, there still was no permit issued for this because there was no drawing, there was no, to my knowledge, there was no engineer drawings that met city, state, county codes. To this day, two years later, it's still a hole in the ground. We've had, we've had EPA out, we've had Jackson County out, we've had meetings with the mayor, we've had, I've had correspondence with the people in Jefferson City, and I've, I've had on-site inspections where they clearly said that none of this met any codes whatsoever. There's no grassing in the area. A few weeds have come up. But prior to this going on, and the reason my concern is, we went to the, all the proper procedures and permits and studies and, and worked with the, all the correct agencies and had a pond built. We stocked it ourselves, we paid for it ourselves. We didn't use any governmental agencies to stock our pond, but we did go by their specifications to the letter. They came out and inspected our pond. They came out and inspected it when it was dry to make sure it was the right size. They were the ones that laid the, the dam out, the size it had to be, the slope-
You have one minute.
Yes, sir.
You have one minute.
I have one minute. I'll try and go talk a little bit faster. I'm from the South, you know, I go a little slow. But anyway, we were required to have so much grass, so many pounds per square foot or yard or acre, whatever it was, so much fertilizer, all this kind of stuff, and it was all inspected. None of this has been done on this retention pond. Now, if you go over up Seven Highway to whatever subdivision that is, Willow Creek, I think you, Eagle Ridge, I guess it is, look at their retention pond. It's fully grassed, it's all done properly. And what they're doing on, on this piece of property that they're calling open space, and they have public access to it, you've got public access to a-
I'm sorry, your time is-
-retention pond.
Your time is up.
And they're filling in my pond.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Redwine?
I would like to know-
Mr. Redwine?
Yes.
He has a question, please.
Good.
Where is your residence in accordance to the staff?
Right, right across the street from the retention pond.
And the retention pond you're referring to is the yellow highlighted area in the corner?
Right here is our property.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm Mrs. Redwine, and I'll take his other phone.
Be sworn in.
I'm Linda Redwine, and I have pictures of that lovely pond for you guys to see. My husband has covered pretty much everything I had to say, so, but I would like you to see the pictures. We've had, our, our situation is well documented. I have stacked a paper this thick that we have dealt with this, this situation since 2007. And in two years' time, as he said, the property has been abandoned, or the project has been abandoned, and the weeds have grown up, and it's helped our pond situation somewhat. It has not, however, helped my neighbors, where he dug a ditch between their property, and his, his retention pond flows between my neighbor's property, and they have not been able to mow their yards in the back, portion of their yards, for two years. It's a, it's a mosquito-ridden bog. And of course, that flows directly into our pond. My concern also is, as well as the rest of the neighborhood, is the size of the homes. We'd like to see larger homes, of course. We don't know what happened to the estate lots that we thought were originally planned when the Chapman whole project started. We haven't seen them yet. So, and I don't know where they're going to go. There's not much land left. I guess the main thing for me is I think this thing needs to be delayed until we get more information and we, we know what size houses and what style houses and, and what he's going to do about the detention. I suggest that, every one of the people we have dealt with have suggested we hire a lawyer, that we have a case. EPA went so far as to say that he is using our pond as his filtering system for his drainage problem. They say, "Hire a lawyer, you have a case." I suggest that, in lieu of a lawyer, Blue Springs, just insist that Blue Springs enforce their, their building, their development codes. If we had, would you like to, can I pass these pictures, or how can we see them?
You can.
If you want to show them the pictures, let me have them first and mark them, and then we'll pass them around. Can we keep these?
Yes, sir.
No, I said, can we keep them?
No.
Mr. Redwine, do you have anything else to add beyond the pictures?
I suppose I don't, except that I just hope that our property, our home, our horses, our 20 acres, be protected somehow.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mrs. Redwine, have you discussed any of this with, with Mr. Thor?
Yes, we have.
All right.
On several occasions.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Has this, have you discussed any of this with, with the City of Blue Springs, with the staff?
Yes, we have. We have met with the mayor, we've met with the city engineer. They all tell us to hire a lawyer.
Mr. Chairman, we've marked those nine photographs, Exhibit Nine.
Exhibit Nine, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there others in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this? Yes, come for, come forward. You have to be sworn in, please.
Can you please talk to the, to the mic?
Mike's right behind you.
Northwest Huntersdale Court.
What was the name again?
You need to repeat yourself for me. 1,800, Northwest Huntersdale Court, Blue Springs.
And what was the name again, please?
Mary Beck.
Beck, thank you.
I have a question. What is this proposed major road? They keep talk, they were talking about proposed major road going through.
Proposed major road going through?
Yeah. And evidently, they're saying, "This is Major right here," is that right?
Yes, it goes through-
You mean the name?
It's proposed, it's not built yet.
But are you saying you're going to take it all the way through here?
It already does go-
No, it doesn't, it doesn't go through there right now, but it is proposed that at some point in the future, it will go through and connect.
Okay, so they're going to try and bring Major through, straight across?
Yes.
Well, when you say they are, what do you-
You guys, the city's going to try and put Major through, is what you're saying?
That is the proposed, you see the yellow hooking up with the dark, and then it comes out over on Seven Highway?
It's crooked, it goes down.
You've got the two black sections and then a yellow section. That is what is proposed, yes.
This development will not build any of Major Road, either on the east side of it or on the west side of it. It will only build Major Road as it's phased out between its boundaries.
So are you saying that it's only going to go into here, and then it's going to stop?
It is planned that at some point, if development occurs to the east there, that Major Road will be put in there. The same is true on the west side, but there aren't any specific plans at the present time because there isn't any development occurring in those two areas.
Okay. So as long as there's no develop in the, in that area, there's not a problem?
That's probably true, yes.
That's all I wanted to know.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward.
Melissa Moorhead, 2201 Southwest Newton Circle, Blue Springs, Missouri. And it appears that the common thread tonight is that there's not enough information. And may I suggest that we let them gather more information, and then we will gather again, and at that time to hear it. But in saying that, my thought on hearing, of course, everyone out there wants the lots to be compatible with what's there. And on more than one occasion, when we have seen the South development, they have, more than one developer has cried financial burden, and, and we have seen the developments kind of bump down to lower because no one wants to have to put in nicer homes. But my thoughts are to have a well-balanced South annexed area. Someone, somewhere, has to put in the nicer, the, the bigger homes. And when, when the people in Willow Tree are looking at 3,000 and 4,000-square-feet home, and, and they think that, you know, the, the 1,800-square-foot homes are, are less desirable, and then the developer looks at 18,000 square foot, 1,800-square-foot homes and say, "I don't want to have to do that." At some point in the South development, we have to put in those developments. We, they have to appear sometime, and we are running out of space to put these. So may I suggest that, you know, my thoughts are, it wouldn't be unreasonable to put 1,600-square-foot homes through the whole development and have it uniformed. And I know he doesn't want to do it, and, but the neighborhood's thinking that they don't want it to go that small. So at some point, can we just compromise-
One minute.
At some point, can we just compromise? And, but my thoughts are, we need to quit kicking this can down the road and at some point, put in a nice development.
Any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this? I'll bring it back up here for Mr. Grounds.
Only, we've already had our say, but only so that it might help. My client informs me that those lots that abut Eagles Ridge, they're willing to make them 1,850 total square feet designation, which would be the classification just below the 2,000. And they insisted that I get up and say the comments about no permits are inaccurate. DNR permits, SWIP permits, all permits that have been required have been done. Any water that's happening now, you have to recall that there's been no development. There is, are no impervious surfaces that have been built for runoff, so it must be runoff that was already happening. There has been a detention basin put in pursuant to the original plat, preliminary plat that was proved, in anticipation that they would have moved forward in a timely manner on the final plat. So the condition, in theory, should already be improved somewhat from what it was without any development whatsoever. But I understand these individuals' concerns, and my client wants me to reiterate, we will meet all of the stormwater rules that are in place in the City of Blue Springs. But we think we have done that, but if the staff finds there's something different, we will do what needs to be done. And I also had needed to mention that because my client let it lapse, he was unaware that there already are sewers on site, too. And we got the appropriate DNR permits. When there was some suggestion that there'd been some digging or things done inappropriately, that was when the sewers were going in with the appropriate DNR permits. But on that, those lots, we'll make that same designation, that 1,850 we indicated.
And those are just the ones that butt up against Eagles Ridge?
That's correct.
Can you, Mr. Grounds, can you review again what's the different sizes of homes going to be in the entire subdivision, from the minimum to the maximum?
Yeah, I think I can. We have indicated that next to Willow Tree- The lots are 16,000 square feet, and that we will have a 1,600-square-foot classification, which is F. Willow Tree's classification is presently E, so it's only one step down. The lots that I've just indicated will have a total square footage of 1,850. The balance will have 1,400 square feet.
Mr. Grounds?
Yes.
Are there currently homes on all of those lots in Willow Tree that back up to this development?
I don't think there are any. My client owns two.
I didn't think they were, but I wanted clarification.
My client owns two.
Right.
And-
And those are vacant?
Yeah, he hasn't built on those.
I'm curious, how many of those lots in Willow Tree that abut this development have homes on them or not?
I don't know. Jim?
There's just two vacant lots.
Okay. All right, so there are ones on those.
All but the last two abutting at Observatory Parkway?
Yeah, and note that- Yeah, and note that there is no development next to them. The only ones are very, just a couple of lots here, and these are the ones that are sixteen thousand square foot lots. Even though we are putting a sixteen hundred square foot minimum, presumptively, somebody who would buy a lot that big would have the opportunity to build a much bigger house. What happened in Willow Tree with eighteen fifty, and yet they built four thousand size houses.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Grounds, can you talk about that detention area? I know we had the school district come before us for the bus barn, or bus, whatever we're calling it. I want to get myself in trouble here. And the detention area that they were building, and they were going to make it more aesthetically pleasing. Does Mr. Thorpe have any plans at the moment for doing anything with that area?
Well, there's always, in the stormwater detention, there are three considerations. The first is whether you have a dry or wet basin. If you have a wet basin, as we know out in the south, those tend to silt in and they have to be cleaned out at intervals. In fact, some of those subdivisions have come to the city asking because it was so expensive. So a wet basin is problematic either for the city or for the homeowners who stay there, so that we have to make a decision. The decision was made that this would be a dry basin for a number of reasons. A dry basin also without the water, and if it drains properly and is properly constructed, you won't have mosquito problems, problems such as that. It also gives an aesthetic in terms of, there isn't a building there. It's a clear area. And under the rules, it can be counted as open space if the slopes are such that it isn't suddenly deep. I forget the exact slope, it's six to one, so that you have more of a rolling look. So what the intent is, that you have a natural look with grasses, that it has a, it's a depression that isn't just a sudden one, so that when it's dry, it looks just as though it was a, quotation marks, "natural area" in the landscape. Now, in truth, they don't look quite natural because they have been shaped some, and they obviously are indentations into the landscape. But that's the intent with them. The dressing up that I've seen in the past has been stone walls, things of that nature, but those are all wet basins. And so, you know, we have seen some, there were some years ago that were done over on the north side where they tried to plant some bushes and things around them, and then the homeowners didn't take good care of those. And those also begin to become a problem if trash flows because nobody has a responsibility for it. So what we've seen in the development community is the cleanest, most functional is a dry basin with the gradual slope in which is just grasses, so it can be easily cut and doesn't have a lot of maintenance, so the homeowners don't have to think they have to go out and trim bushes and do that kind of thing. And that's something the city has debated for years. If we could have big gigantic regional basins like on the north side, it would be much better. But at the present time, we have small ones that are on site, and this is what we have.
And once that is done, then that should alleviate the problem with, for the property owners to the north with their pond?
Well, the answer is that our development is not allowed to aggravate in any way the existing water flow. Now, so it may not alleviate a problem if it existed previously and the water flow off is the same as, after development is the same as it was before development, and if there was a problem, there'll still be a problem. But what we have found oftentimes is that when a developer puts in a basin, that it does make it a little bit better, but doesn't necessarily take care of it. It just is not allowed to make it worse. And staff makes sure that the post-development flow off the water is not at any greater rate than the pre-development. But it doesn't always take care of the problem. It just does not create or increase one.
Yeah, I understand that. I just didn't know if, because I'm, what I'm hearing is that, and I may be misunderstanding what I'm hearing here, was that that problem really was, really developed once, several years ago, when some of that land was cleared.
And I don't have the historical memory or information to comment on that. I was told that that had been a wet area of some longstanding.
All right.
And there are all kinds of problems that can help happen in the heavy rains we have as runoff. But my client is determined that he will meet all the rules in the City of Blue Springs with regard to stormwater detention.
I have another question.
I have.
The top retention basin that has a map here showing drain, which direction is that? Is this going up or down? Is it going towards?
Going to the north. Goes north, through Jim's lots.
The flow's going this direction?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, in just casual observation, there's gonna be a heck of a lot more flow going through that area than what, I mean, with the development that it was before. You're gonna have a lot of blacktop, a lot of areas that's gonna cause more drainage.
Well, what's gonna happen is, that's the purpose of the basin, is those impervious surfaces will be directed through that basin where they'll be stored, so that the discharge rate will be the same as it was before. It would just be for a longer period of time, but not at any greater rate. And so the same water will run off at the same pace. And that's the purpose of the basin, is to impound it and not let it all go off quickly because of the blacktop and rooftop.
I have a question. On this, I guess, block wall, is that the basin?
I haven't seen those pictures. Jim, if you could come up and look, because I need somebody who actually knows the area.
So is it blocked, blocking off anything, or, I don't know, is this it?
That's on the north.
Jim?
Okay, but I am sworn in. I told you that's on the south side of the road. This is not on our property.
No.
It's not on our property.
Well, that basin have any decorative block, stone wall, anything like that?
It's a dry basin.
Well, I've seen dry basins with stone decorative walls.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Grounds. Thank you. Bring it back up here for any comments on the record before I close this.
Mr. Chairman, I got one, a couple of comments. One thing is, you know, I've been up here for quite a few years, and I've been preaching this same sermon how we've, when we first built Adams Dairy Parkway, we look at a big executive home, at least more than fourteen hundred square foot homes. And as we progress in our development of homes, we just keep on gearing ourselves down, lower and lower because of economic times. And like I say, I know quite a few of my friends, and I'll repeat this again, who decide to move out of Blue Springs because they don't feel like their housing market is being met because we keep building smaller and smaller newer homes, and therefore, we're losing some residents because of that. Because I envision too, when Adams Dairy Road is gonna be built, we're gonna have homes somewhere to, you know, at least two thousand square foot homes. But it seems like we just keep on, keep hearing the same story about developers saying, well, economic times are tough. We have to scale our community down lower in order to meet economics times. Well, eventually, the times will get better, and people are gonna move other places who want to go, step up in the market. When we're getting to point me, I see just starting to go backwards in our development of our community by allowing more and more smaller homes. Yes, it meets the criteria, the builders making some money, but it's a long-term benefit to our community. And I'm also get kind of tired of seeing the open spaces being retention ponds. I mean, really, what, how can the residents in the area use an open space? I said, how can the residents really use an open space if it's a retention pond and they can't have their kids there or really get a benefit of it? Anyway, I say, I keep seeing this happening over and over again, and I just can't support it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please come back.
I have to echo some of those feelings. My understanding was that particularly with Innovation Park and all these things that we're trying to bring into the community, the people that we're trying to attract through those businesses and those endeavors are not going to be looking at fourteen hundred square foot homes. And I know that in the past, we've had a couple of people come into town and they ended up buying a home in Lee's Summit even though they work in Blue Springs because they can't find the home that they want in town. So I have some real concerns. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Thorpe is willing to increase the square footage along Eagles Ridge, but I have some concerns that the entire development isn't a little larger. And again, to echo the thought of the difficult times. Yes, we're having difficult times, and there's no denying that. But I'm hard-pressed to say, let's lower a standard because today is difficult when tomorrow will be better. So I have some, I'm really conflicted on these two items.
One thing that you've got to remember, we have over, of homes of two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand square, excuse me, two thousand square foot and above, we have over a thousand lots that we have, preliminary plats are platted right now to be sold. Of homes of, I believe, three thousand and above square foot, we have like ninety in inventory or that have plats on them, or preliminary plats.
Down in the southern section?
In Blue Springs.
Okay.
And most of it is in the southern section. The Realty Association, the HBA have all stated, after this tsunami that we're having in the economy, in the homebuilding industry, that people are going to be buying homes for what they need, not what they want. There's a whole new mentality level that people are gonna have on home purchases. That's why you kind of got to take a look at, and a lot of the developers are taking a look at, of what they're going to, what they need to start building for the future. And I will have to say that I understand what Mr. Thorpe is looking at on this project, and he's looking for the future. There's more lots out there right now for homes of two thousand square foot and above, so he needs to get into a niche where he can sell the lots he can at a quicker rate. And that's what I think he's trying to go for on this. Everywhere around there, there's lots of higher, higher square footage per lot. So I'm gonna have to, you know, I will definitely support this for what he's trying to do down here. It's a good location for that. It's a development that we've already passed once before in the same, same square footage for the homes. So I don't see any reason why to slap a guy when he's, in this economy, when he's trying to do the same subdivision that's already been passed once before.
And I have no problem with saying, you know, you think it's a good subdivision and a good plan, but I don't like hearing, well, we're doing it because of the economy. If we do it, we need to do it because it's a good plan, and I think that's what we need to stand by.
Correct, and that will, that will sell.
But I also think, Commissioner, that at least sixteen hundred square feet backing up next to four thousand square feet would be a lot better than a fourteen hundred square foot home as far as comparable values to help maintain their value.
I would agree with that, or a buffer or something.
But can I add a point to that?
Yes.
I mean, I think we're really belaboring this, but the bottom line is, it's one classification down. And I think the thing that we need to learn here is, if a Willow Tree development is going to build four thousand square foot homes with a minimum of eighteen hundred and fifty square foot requirement, you kind of get into this problem. In other words, if you want to build a subdivision that's gonna be four thousand square foot homes, make that your classification. It's kind of hard to go to the next developer that's right next door and say, well, I got these four thousand square foot homes, and they're gonna build minimum eighteen thousand, or eighteen hundred and fifty square foot, which is one step down. I mean, you see the dilemma you get into. So if you're gonna develop a subdivision, it needs to be fairly accurate to what the minimum is. And as they've indicated, generally, you don't build the minimum, but you can't, you can't expect what's occurred when you have that classification. I mean, it puts it in a difficult situation. So I just think that's a lesson that we need to learn as we talk to developers and they're wanting to develop. If you're gonna have these large estate lots, then probably eighteen hundred or two thousand square foot minimums doesn't probably make a lot of sense. And then to go along with what's going on here, I mean, you know, whether we want to call it the economy or not, I mean, you know, I don't think we've seen a lot of homes moving throughout the whole metro. So I think the fact that someone is wanting to try to build, and they know much better than me, I mean, they're putting their money at risk, and if this is what they think is gonna sell, then, you know, and as Mr. Parker said, you know, this is something that, it's not new. It was approved two years ago when the economy was in much better situation than it is today. So I guess I'm a little surprised that we're having such an issue with it this time around. I guess I support it as well and would hope that we would agree to their condition. I think they make a good point about the major road extension, I think, to extend it out there. And frankly, I've seen that a lot where you do extend a road out too far and you end up having a dumping ground, and you just, it just doesn't look well. So to me, in this tough, difficult economic situation that we're going through, I think that makes sense to try to help the developer out to make this a feasible project.
But Commissioner, don't you think still, though, with the, even if they built four thousand square feet, they were still zoned for eighteen fifty. We should only drop it down to sixteen hundred.
But that part is being dropped to sixteen hundred.
Okay.
Not, but there's no reason to make the whole subdivision do that.
You're just talking about the balance. You're not talking about the whole subdivision.
Everything, everything on...
You're just appeasing the landowners that are right next to you.
Next, don't...
No, look at the total subdivisions. All right, I'm talking about the whole subdivision. All we're doing is taking care of the small area of homes. I'm just talking about the whole. I think that it's great to lease going eighteen fifty for the homes close to the already established one, but I'm just talking, looking at the big picture. I think sixteen hundred really should be...
Well, I think if the market was out there and everybody wanted to buy a four thousand square foot home, then that's what he'd be building. I don't think we can, we can, we can require huge homes and sit here and not grow and have nothing happen in town, or we can have some economic development.
Yeah, Ken, we can grow, if that's the direction we want to grow.
You know, everyone keeps saying our economic condition is stressed. I'm well aware of it. But here again, as a broker, a real estate broker, and you say no one's selling homes or buying homes or building homes, that's not the case. I think we're being narrow-sighted, and the direction we're looking in, there are people still spending money. They're still developing, and the biggest problem that I have is having a home that's large enough for someone to purchase. So we are limited. We might have the lots ready to build the home. People want to come to an existing home. Just personally, I've lost two sales because I couldn't find a house big enough. They went to Lee's Summit. I still sold it, but we're looking at developing Blue Springs. Blue Springs is getting ready to start growing, and we need to support that. Regardless, we do have a shortage of major size homes. I'm talking about not the one point five mil, but we need some two and three billion dollar homes around here. People are spending that kind of money.
Did you say two and three million dollar homes?
Mm-hmm. If we had a small estate where there were some executive homes, but I'm saying executive, we've got executives moving all over this country. You know, you want to know why Johnson County and Overland Park have such a large population? That's because they are building homes. They're not narrow-sighted, and they're not just limited in their scope is what happening, what is happening right now. So there is gonna be a need, but I don't know if making him build larger homes through the whole subdivision, but I think we need to keep it to some level where it supports the existing homes around the neighborhood.
Can I, I just, I think we need to wrap this up, too. This has been approved before two years ago, and now all of a sudden, we're gonna come back and say, we think you need to build larger homes? Look, the market will dictate this. The developer's putting his money at risk. We can all wish for these big estate homes. I would like to see more of them, too. I think to single someone out when they come here with a plat, especially that's been approved two years ago, to try to say, now we're not happy with the size homes, when he's already agreed to increase several locations? I mean, I just think that's asking us to do something that frankly, I'm not, I don't feel like it's something we should be doing.
Mr. Chairman? I don't want to interrupt you. I wasn't here two years ago, okay? What I'm saying is, we are being nearsighted on what we are going to be doing. I'm not talking about in the next thirty days. I'm talking about, once the house is built, the subdivision's there. They're not gonna tear down homes and start building larger ones. What's there is there, period.
Well, I agree. I just think you're always gonna... I just think you're always going to need fewer estate homes than you are homes in 1,850 to 1,600 square foot. That's just real estate 101. You're not going to have...
Well, I've been at it for 22 years, okay?
I understand that.
But these are 1,400, not 1,600.
Right.
1,400 square foot homes is a start.
Right. I'm just saying even at that end of the spectrum.
Not my start.
But, I mean, I think we're taking this to a level that, yes, we've had a lot of this discussion about the type of houses we want in Blue Springs, and I think that's a good discussion. I just don't see that it's, I feel comfortable saying, we don't like at all what you're doing here and these all need to be 2,500 or 3,000 square foot homes. Like, I think the market dictates that.
We've not said that. We've just said 1,600.
Okay, let's wrap this up. If there's anything that's...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one comment, follow-up on some of the questions here. I don't want to use economic terms, but the owners of this property are still paying, have expenses every day. And, you know, if we all knew that crystal, or read the crystal ball, that everything's going to be great, a year from now would be great, but we can't. And when they are willing to spend their money to get something going, you know, I find it kind of hurt it, working on them for something different because they certainly would not have to expend the money at this time. I won't use the economic thing, but there is meters running on their expenses every day, so...
But I think we have to be careful that we have a good plan and we don't approve or disapprove based on the economic situation at this very moment. You know, if it's a good plan, it's a good plan. If it isn't, it isn't. The square footage, you've got duplexes and fourplexes over here. You can't, I mean, I don't want to put a 2,000 square foot requirement up against a duplex either.
Do we have anything, hasn't been said, anything new, anybody wants to add?
Of course, I want my two cents, Mr. Chairman. While I like to applaud the applicant for coming forward, and it's been a long time since there's been any major new home construction in the city of Blue Springs. There are homes in the very nice subdivisions of Stone Bridge, Quell Walk, many other subdivisions all across Blue Springs that are within the 1,400 to 1,500 square foot requirement on the main floor that originally sold in the 140s and 150s. And up until the bubble burst, we're selling for $170, $180, and $190,000. Now, they have all taken a hit, but these are not starter homes. These are nice, mid-level, maybe just a hair under mid-level homes. So I've heard the word starter home many times tonight and it bothers me. 1,400 may not sound like a lot, but being in the real estate industry for a decade and a half with several of my other commissioners up here, I feel compelled to say that this is certainly not your Kings Ridge, your Manor South, your Pheasant Run starter home subdivision. While I do wish that the open areas were designed differently to where they could be more accessible and more used by the subdivision, I like this project. And one more final question following my statements. This is a preliminary concept plan, a PRO?
Yes.
How does our approval or denial tonight affect the final that will come to us later? In the sense of perhaps directed to staff. I don't care for some of the open space, but I really like the project. And the statement was made earlier that they could come back later and define further like the concerns I have with the pool. I think the pool is too small for 365 home subdivision. If we accept it tonight, is that final or can we, at a later point, review that and make sure that in our eyes, that things are sufficient?
That's where the conditions come into play, in terms of setting forth what needs to come forward with the PRO final plan, but essentially just like a PUD or even a final plat. The final plan needs to, in essence, conform to the concept plan, the initial plan, meaning of the lot configuration, sizes, location, road layout, things of that sort cannot really be modified. But in terms of details, talking about, you know, we've got, we're discussing minimum home size classification. While then PRO final plan, they bring forward some conceptual drawings of what those houses may be. That's the type of detail. And for the pool, for example, the general location, size of that lot, but yeah, in terms of parking numbers, you know, where the parking lot is in that area, how big the pool precisely is can be changed. So the details in terms of what's within those boundaries that you're identifying can make. I hope that helps clarify, but essentially, the boundaries is what you're identifying tonight, and then the details within those boundaries can be fleshed out with the final plan.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I'll close the public hearing and we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve PROC 10092363 with the 15 staff recommendation.
Second.
Eliminate number four.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I want to eliminate...
Number four.
I want to allow the developer only to do that first 250 feet of major road.
And we're going to change the, those lots that butt up against Eagle Ridge, the square footage?
Yes.
To 1,850.
He's agreed to do that.
Yes.
Number 16.
Lots of budding...
Eagle Ridge.
Any else?
Single family.
Wait a minute.
One at a time. Lots of budding Eagle Ridge, single family will be a classification E.
Or it's F. Mr. Chairman? 1,850, whichever one. The 1,850.
And you are eliminating number four.
Well, he's changing it.
We're changing it to 250.
To the 250, too.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Number four says that major road will be improved to the 250 square feet.
I'm sorry. The classification E is 1,800 square feet.
Right.
The 1,850 number, I believe, is coming from Willow Tree. That is their own deed restriction, not a housing classification per the code. So staff would appreciate clarification, whether it's actual classification E or the specific number of 1,850, because classification E is 1,800.
I would rather stick within our own classifications and make it an E.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
I don't want to be adding numbers into the mix.
Thank you.
Let's go back to recommendation number four, please.
Recommendation number four is the request of the applicant that major road will only be improved to the first approximately 250 feet.
Do we want to do that or state that approved or completed in phases? Because we don't want to stop at 250 feet.
With phase one.
Approved 250 square feet of phase one.
250 linear feet.
Linear.
On phase one.
Who seconded the motion?
I second it.
Do you agree with everything?
Since we're discussing, right?
Yes.
What about budding up 1,600 square feet next to Willow Tree?
That's already, that's already there.
I wasn't sure.
That's not a change.
That's right.
Okay, does everybody understand the motion? We're voting on. Care of a roll call vote.
Commissioner May?
No.
Culpepper?
You want to come back to me, please?
Franklin?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Abbott?
No.
Henney?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Chosen?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Okay, we recommend approval to the city commission. Then entertain a motion on preliminary plat for colonial heights.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a recommendation that we approve preliminary plat for colonial highlands with the nine staff recommendations. And, well, I added 10, I'm sorry. And also, we need to change number three to mirror our number four in the last one.
It's not number three.
Or number two. I'm sorry, it's number two. And then the additional number 10, the developers shall provide off-site utility easements as necessary to serve the utility needs of phase one of this development with the final plat submitted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Does everybody understand the motion? Okay. Okay, let's see a roll call on that first.
Commissioner Culpepper?
Aye.
Franklin?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Abbott?
No.
Henney?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Chosen?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
May?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We'll move on to agenda item four, the alternative sign plan for Applebee's.
Karen, Karen, do you have a picture?
Yes.
To, before you tonight is the master sign plan for Applebee's located at the southeast corner of Interstate 7 and Highway 7. In essence, they have currently a pole sign that is existing that they intend to keep with their remodeling. They have one wall sign and that wall sign is on their west facade. That particular sign has already been approved through the standard sign permit, and then they've come back to us and said, we want to add two additional signs. One would be on the north elevation facing I-70, and the other is on the south elevation and it is an awning sign. It allows for people to know where to stop and pick up their to-go orders. I say that this is a master sign plan rather than an alternative sign plan, and the reason I say that is because all of the signs that they're proposing meet the sign code. They're not asking for anything outside of the sign code, except that they are asking for four signs instead of three. If they were at three or less, they would not need a master sign program, a master sign plan. I think the information is well outlined in the staff report, and I'd stand for any questions if there are any.
Looks pretty similar to the plant, the signs they have up.
Very, very similar. Very similar.
Which sign are they picking up right now?
It would be the south elevation, or I'm sorry, the west elevation. And eventually, they're doing some exterior remodel, and I don't believe they have their tower up yet. But once they get the tower up, that's where that sign will go. And they have a standard sign permit to do that. It is up now, so...
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Tharp.
Thank you.
Okay, the applicant, please make a presentation.
Good evening. My name is Brian Tuppin with Applebee's. Happy to answer any questions. Actually, the north sign is an existing sign. We're looking at updating it with a new script. They're very similar, dropping neighborhood and bar essentially and including the Applebee's logo, basically. And the car side on the south side is correctly to identify a location where customers can come and pick up to-go orders, basically.
Anybody have any question?
Did you say you were dropping the neighborhood bar? It looks to me like it's the wrong...
I apologize. That was the, we dropped it on the west side, on the existing tower.
Other questions? Thank you. Any discussions? You create a motion?
I make a motion, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion on the Applebee's Master Alternative Sign Plan, case file ASP 11092407, and there were no staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Okay, you have approval for your sign. Okay, that concludes our meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is Monday, December 28th. Does everyone plan to be here on December 28th?
I'm questionable for that meeting.
I'm questionable.
All right, otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman? Before we make a motion here, I just want to make a comment real quick on the Applebee's deal. I'm working on the sign committee to revise some of the sign codes, and if the revisions we're proposing were to be accepted, we would not have been hearing that tonight. That would have been administratively approved because we're taking out that three sign requirement, especially on a single building, and making it where the master sign plan only applies to multi-tenant buildings.
As long as you're on that committee, can we put something in there that addresses all the trucks that park up and down 7th Highway?
We are.
With arrows?
We're working on it.
Saying shop here, et cetera?
That's one of the things...
They're everywhere.
One of the things we're working on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to mention just real briefly, I think you got an email from Karen last week about the National APA Conference coming up. April sounds like a long ways away, but registration's open, hotel registration's open, early bird registration closes in like six to eight weeks. So that's why I wanted to send that information out to see if there's any interest. Commissioner May showed a strong interest and is the first to reply, so if there's anyone else who has a strong interest, who has not attended, Commissioner May has not yet attended, please let us know as soon as possible and we'll start making arrangements for two plan commissioners and then two staff to attend the conference in mid-April.
So if you're interested and you have not attended, please let Mr. Allen...
You're going to drive his truck or...
Now, entertain a motion. Yes.
We got an email regarding a demonstration potential to the sign committee for this Thursday at 5:00. Is that still, is that still on and it will be in the parking lot over here across?
Outside?
It's outdoor signs. You can't bring those signs inside.
Can we just park our street?
Honk if you like it.
Part of the demonstration is to show how those signs dim in the dark, so...
Oh, I'll be watching.
Is that going to be televised? Can we just...
The sign's better than me.
It's not a public meeting.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Right before Christmas. I already made a motion.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
I'll oppose, same sign. We're adjourned.
Yeah.